Good morning, everyone. We will call the meeting to order for today. First item on our agenda is approval of today's agenda.
Move approval. Second.
Kevin, motion to approve in a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion is carried. Approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries.
Oh, excuse me.
I'm going to do that.
Oh, excuse me.
I'll get to that, yeah. And this morning, we are going to recognize some of the people that helped in the correctional and law enforcement center planning and getting done with that huge project. And so, construction engineers has provided a plaque for those that were involved, and they're very nice, and we appreciate that. And we are so appreciative of everybody that was involved in this process. It involved a lot of people, a lot of staff people, a lot of citizens, the county board, and I think everybody can see now that it was a worthwhile project. So, Kevin, do you have anything to say if you want?
Yes, I would. You know, working, I think we probably had over 100 people that were involved in a significant way within this project. And one of the things that we wanted to do, this has been the largest project that the county has ever, you know, been involved with, and we wanted to make sure that all of you that spent some time working on it could have a momento to keep as appreciation from all of us for the work that all of you did to help make this all successful. And so, I think, like Commissioner Wayland said, we do have plaques for each of you. There's probably going to be two more presentations like this. We tried to accommodate each person's schedule. So, thank you again for all of your help on this, whether you were on the actual planning and construction committee or the behavioral health committee, the finance component of it. We just want to thank you, so.
Okay, we've got a number this morning, so rather than do a speech for each individual, we'll be here till tomorrow morning if we do that. I'll call out the names, and we'll see who's here, and come up and get your plaque and your congratulations for a job well done. George DeBaudry.
Aaron Brooks.
Tim Det. Lee. Always hiding behind the scenes. Mark Empty. Sheriff empty now, so. Commissioner Gross. Frank, thank you for all your help. Nancy Gunderson. Thanks, Nancy. Really appreciate your help. Jim Haney. Thank you, Commissioner. Mary Colby. Thanks, Mary. Appreciate your help. Katie Johnson. We probably wouldn't have the jail open if it weren't for Katie. Lori Johnson. And we wouldn't have had any money if it weren't for her. Steve Larson. Jim Larson. Thank you, Charlie. Really appreciate your help. Jenny Mokel. Thank you, Commissioner. Joe Olson. He's probably taking care of snow. Kaye Overbaugh. Ron DeCorder. Ron, come on up. Justin Roberts. Justin, thanks, Ron. Robin Rommel. Julie Salat.
She worked very hard.
Yeah. I know that Julie, but Julie worked a lot. Mark Sloan. And nothing would be working there right now if it weren't for him. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate your help. Charles Swinberg. Chuck, thank you for all you did. Carrie Putin. Thanks, Eric.
Mr. Wayland.
Oh. Thank you. And Melissa Ubarra. Thanks, Melissa. Appreciate your help. Okay. Thanks to everybody again for everything that you did, and I appreciate every part of you. Okay, we'll let those that are leaving clear out, and then we'll go to citizens to be heard. Okay, next item on the agenda is our citizens to be heard. And anybody who has an issue they'd like to discuss that is not on today's agenda, please come forward now. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you today?
Good.
My name is Scott Downs. I'm an elevator in Baker. And I don't know how well-informed you guys are about the kind of situation that we have out there. About two years ago, a little less than that, there was a couple citizens that were arguing there was a property line dispute. And the county came back and told one individual, he has got to move his stuff, et cetera, et cetera. Here we are a year and a half later, and now this individual has now brought the whole town in on this thing. We've received letters from the county. The new Hallie from the planning department has sent out letters, and this individual has gone through everybody's property and made, saying that we have stuff that's not correct with the code or whatever, and using the county resources to kind of terrorize the city of Baker at this point. We had a township meeting last night, and things are starting to get pretty hot. A couple major concerns I have is, as a licensed design professional, I'm well aware of the code situations that are being addressed. Some of them are just kind of shots in the dark. This individual is using that department to come after all these other citizens. On a professional level, we are starting to think that we need to start playing offense out there instead of playing defense and letting the county come to us, which means one of the points we brought up last night is we might start to retain counsel against the county for just kind of coming after us. The other concern I have is, as you guys all know, is you get out past the city limits, people kind of, when they get hot, they don't necessarily care too much about government. And when you have individuals that don't believe in process, which currently is not really even working, things are going to get ugly, and it's going to unfortunately get violent with certain individuals out there, which we want to, we don't want to happen. We have families, we have children, we have all this stuff in that community. And it's just a really, it's a concern of me, of the other residents living in this community, that things are just not getting taken care of, and things are going to go south in a bad way. The, one of the things that was brought up last night is the fact that we're getting these letters from the county, and why would any, anybody in that community want to comply with any of this stuff? Because the county can't even take care of the job they were supposed to do two years ago with this one individual. They've given him countless extended deadlines to get his property, his mobile home, off of this gentleman's property. And it just, as a bystander, you know, I kind of get this, I mean, I'm on the fringe, and I get little bits of information and stuff like that, and I'm a new resident out there, and I pretty much kind of keep to myself. But now with dragging me into the thing, I have offered my services pro bono to anyone in town to fight this individual legally, and if it need be, to play offense against the county, because it's just, it's an unfair process for us who are kind of living out there. I don't want to take up too much of your time this morning, I just want to address the fact that there's a situation going on out there that needs to be remedied. And I don't believe that the remedy, and this is just my personal opinion, but I don't believe the remedy is letting this individual come in and use the resources that we have in this county to terrorize the citizens, the good citizens of Baker. It just doesn't make any sense to me. We, we all, I mean, every one, every person in this room works, their job is associated with the funds that this county can bring in to pay you guys. And we are just like, we've blown, I bet we've blown 50 grand on this situation, because one individual can't get his stuff straight, and the county doesn't enforce it like it needs to be enforced. And that's, that's pretty much it. I encourage, I know several of you board members are familiar with this, and I know that people that weren't, that aren't here anymore, spent a lot of time dealing with it over the last two years. When I first moved out there, it was a year and a half ago, I was at the first meeting. So, if that's the speed of the, of the government in this facility, to get this gentleman to move propane tanks and straight-up building off this guy's land, I think the citizens of Baker need to start playing offense instead of defense, because it's just, we need a different strategy. It's not working, and we're getting pulled into the mix. And me personally, I'm a pretty mellow guy, but if you start, start pissing down my back and tell me it's raining, it's, we're going to play, we're going to play ball.
Do you have any meetings scheduled then, future meetings?
I don't believe so. It's just at that point now, we all receive letters at the end of December, and we were given a week to respond, which is like, I mean, ridiculous, first of all, because it's just like, it's the holidays and this and that. So, we're just getting kind of the knife stuck in our gut a little bit on this whole thing. And we're just people paying our taxes, trying to make a living, and keep going.
When you have a meeting, who calls that meeting?
Well, the only meeting I've ever, I've only been to two meetings. The first one was in October, I believe, of '17, and then the other one was last night.
So, it's planning commission?
Right. Commissioner Wayland, I think the previous meetings he's referring to is when this, these problems have been brought to the attention of the planning commission. Last night, both Commissioner Haney, Commissioner Gross, and myself have been aware of this in the last couple weeks. You've reached out. Jerry Buttonhoff has also reached out to us. I went to the township meeting last night and heard their concerns. I mean, they are significant concerns about what's going out there. This mirrors a land dispute issue that we've dealt with a lot in the last couple of years. And so, I'm hoping that we can address some issues before it gets to that sort of a head. I told them last night that I want to schedule a meeting with administration and planning and zoning, and maybe our legal department, to figure out where we are and how we go forward, and deal with what deadlines have been, are set and what aren't set. Because quite frankly, I agree with you. If there was somebody's property on my own property, I can't say that I have, I would have been as calm in the last two years as this landowner has been. So, I completely understand.
Steve, do you have anything on this?
Well, I think I'm fairly familiar with it. I haven't been involved in it the entire two years, but I have been involved in it off and on, going back to this resident buying some tax forfeited property, probably three years ago now. But as far as this meeting is concerned, the one thing I do want the commissioners to know, the concerned citizens to know, and, or remind them, is there are private remedies that landowners have for people's stuff on their land that are not the same as the remedies that we have by county ordinance. The county ordinance enforcement is limited in what it can do. There's not an ordinance that allows somebody to simply go out there and push things from one lot to another, or pick them up and dispose of them. There are private remedies that get closer to that. And so, I just want to remind the citizens, as they've been reminded on other occasions, each interest in this, the township, the county, the private landowners, have somewhat different interests, but also have somewhat different remedies. And so, the full range of tools is available, not just from one source, but by combining all those sources.
So, with that, I'm confused that one of those remedies is to send us all letters to, on stuff on our property. And honestly, I mean, let's not, let's cut the BS, because it's, what's really going to happen is whatever remedies you're talking about that you're not sharing the resources over, because that's how easy it's going to be to just say, hey, these are your, here's some links, follow those. It's just not going to happen that way. People aren't caught there, they're not going to sit in front of the computers with the limited bandwidth we have out there to look up whatever resources we have to battle this guy. It's going to get ugly. The gentleman is a known breger of how many guns he has, stuff that he's done in the past. He drives around town, cussing around town, driving around with beers in his hand while the kids are playing in the street. He's, you know, he's a known racist, the guy is. I had a couple of black gentlemen working for me the other day, and he's, or when I first moved out there, and he's out there dropping end bombs. And it's like, how do you deal with that guy? And I understand it's easy to sit in here and, in front of a computer or a book and say, this is how we do these things. But the fact of the matter is, is it's just not going to happen that way. We, people just, I mean, just look at the state of this country at this point. People don't do their research. It's a lot easier to go get in someone's face, throw a punch, pull out a weapon, et cetera, et cetera, and that's how it's going to get handled. We don't want it that way. And people are just, I mean, we see it on the news every day. So, to tell me that there's other re, and I don't, look, I've been in this industry for a long time. I've never come across anything that I've ever been able to say, hey, it's all right to take this guy's property off my land. All that's going to do is result in, we're going to end up calling these guys, beside, after someone's got a bullet in their chest. That's just the fact of the matter. And so, you guys got to make a decision to get this stuff done, because it's just like, there's some hot individuals out there, and that have just had it. And there's some people that have played the, played by the rules, been civil, tried to, tried to use the resources that the county offers to get this done, and it's just not happening. Two years is a ridiculous amount of time for someone to have to be held captive by an individual out there.
Steve, can you tell me where we stand in terms of the legal piece? What was the last, is there an order standing, or is?
Oh, do you mean in that criminal file? Yes, but I, I wasn't anticipating this this morning. I didn't look anything up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I could certainly check later. I guess if, if I was being not clear enough, what I mean is, by other remedies, I mean, get your own lawyer and talk to that lawyer about public, about a private nuisance. That's what I was trying to get at.
Well, and that's, I think, at this point, the consensus right now is if we end up hiring a lawyer, the county's going to get dragged into this thing, and it's not going to be pretty. And there's going to be a lot of negative publicity on this county that's just not needed. It's just like, someone needs to make a decision and can go with it. The fact that we're just wasting resources, I don't know what the, what your paychecks are, but I imagine they're pretty good. And to spend that money every couple weeks figuring this stuff out, we could be building playgrounds for kids. Let's, let's stop wasting the money. Let's, let's figure something out. Get this guy to comply with the law. And, and I think it starts with your chair. I mean, I believe you could probably help that along. And it's just kind of ridiculous to keep mulling this thing and kicking it back for it to keep coming up. It's just, doesn't make any sense to me. And that is, I mean, it's unfortunate that, you know, we all know that, we all know what people think about government these days, and this isn't helping. We're supposed to be working together. And it's like, to just keep, I mean, it's two years now, two years, and now you're dragging the rest of us into, you know, I don't have time for this stuff. I'm trying to, you guys see the problem I got out there? I've got enough time dealing with rats and raccoons. It's like...
Okay, we'll see if we can get something. Hallie, did you have something you wanted to add, or?
I was just going to add.
All right, let's go after the mic now.
I was just going to add the point of what had happened at the last trial, and that it was basically kind of the same thing, where things were found guilty, and he has until April to respond and comply.
That's by court?
Okay. The last hearing was December 17.
Okay.
So, what happens the first of April?
Let's, and that's what I told you last night, that I want to make sure that we need to determine that we've got the conversation, we've had the conversations before that deadline. We have a pretty good understanding of what happens on April 2nd if, if that hasn't happened. And so, I can't offer that answer right now, but I, I will commit, this is definitely something that we're going to have conversations on and figure out.
Yeah, I would request that we have that in writing, so as citizens of that community, we can, we come, March 1st, we want to have our ducks in a row to play offense, because it's just not, I mean, if you guys can't get the job done, then we got to come do your job.
Great. And I also requested that a representative from the township, Jerry Buttonoff or whoever, be part of those conversations, so the township's also in the loop as to what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
So, Steve, you want to coordinate this with Commissioner Mojo and whoever else wants to be involved in staff? And it looks like the sheriff's office should at least get involved here to make sure we're on the right track with everything, so, so we'll see if we can get this straightened out, so. Okay, any other citizens that would like to be heard this morning?
My name is Tim Thompson, and we've got properties in Baker that are associated with this, where some of the original ones that were involved in this. Knowing the individual who was involved, we chose to, there was a trailer house set on our property line. So, the first thing to do, knowing the individual, the explosive nature and the risks involved, we went through the planning and zoning process. If things are taken care of through the courts, he gets back within the planning and zoning lines. It's, I don't want to waste a lot of your time, but there's hours and hours and hours of things that have been done with the planning and zoning committee. The committee itself, I think, had set a direction with the administrative changes, with, you know, the attorney changes and stuff. Things have taken a very, very different course, which has caused me to end up in court, spending thousands of dollars defending myself against things that I didn't do. And that is a direct act of you not doing your jobs. And that's at the county attorney level. I don't want to hear again that I've got remedies. Number one, do your job, get the setbacks in order, and follow through. And if you don't, and it's not done by April 1st, the county commission here should have the authority to say, we're going to take a different direction, and if it involves personnel changes, wonderful, welcome that. We have spent two years working diligently to try and get a resolution. This is not an individual that enjoys rules, respects the law, respects court, anything like that. Like Scott said, there's, there's guns there involved. A lot of us are exposed in multiple ways. So, if we could get this worked through, the system with the rules and stuff that are already in place, instead of being told that, you try a dipper out, because I don't really want to put the time and effort into doing my job, that, that song and dance is not going to be listened to. We're very sorry and apologetic to have to be in front of the entire commission. Check the rules out. If we're, if we're not in the right place or doing things the right way, let us know which, which direction to go. We want resolution. We've been, some of the property has been in our family for several generations, four generations. We've always strived to be great neighbors. Don't want to be negative people. It's not in our makeup. Not, we don't want to be on the offense. We just want things to, to follow the process and the plans. And unfortunately, the, the system has been manipulated several times by the same individual. It's unfortunate, but it's very, very real. All my files are open. If you want to take a look at the claims and the restraining order, some are very easily refutable, and not the personal stuff, you know, those claims are what they are. But as far as the definitions in the court case, you sign something that says, under penalty of perjury, this is true. You're welcome to look at anything I've got. I will get the court transcripts printed for you, so you can verify yourself. And just, that defines the nature and the character of the individual that we're dealing with. And it's unfortunate, but it's real in the property issues. There's been several people that have surrounding property. There's been a trespass order against a 97-year-old gentleman who just wanted to say, that's my land. And then the next thing you know, there's a sheriff shows up at his door and says you were trespassing. He was on his own land. We started out by getting surveys done. Survey pins, most of them were located, they were there. The property started out as a tax forfeit property that was bought after a county sale. No requirements for surveys. It's a backward situation, and unfortunately, it all started right here. And we continue to be victims in this, and we were encouraged to no longer play the role of victim. You're going to have to start playing offense, defend yourselves, and go forward. We'd like you to have the opportunity to ask questions, address us, anyway. My contact information's available. Anything that we have, anybody that we've talked to, I don't want you to get second-hand information, but we'll tell you where stuff came from. But please, take this under advisement, please move forward, because it is a dangerous situation. And there's good people, like Scott Scissor's families, there's kids out there. And it's not the first time that this individual's been involved in this. But, but as far as shying away and telling us that we've got other legal options, number one, do your job. We pay our taxes too, and we pay a hell of a lot of them. And, and with that, there's some expectations at times that the process is going to be open, fair, and transparent, and that's all we ask. So, I'm not pleased with the way directions are going, and we don't want to be here in front of you to address this, but what's been happening in Baker, it's developed out of a situation that started with us, has now blossomed and bloomed through different actions to affect people that, they've been great neighbors, some for many, many years, and people that have been there 25 years are getting letters that they're not in compliance with stuff. It's absolute garbage. Check it out. If you, if you disagree with me, certainly let me know. I'm willing to have an open conversation anytime, anywhere. But there's, there's a lot of citizens that are being impacted in a negative way because this county has not done its job. And it's unfortunate... A lot of us are exposed in multiple ways, so if we could get this worked through, the system with the rules and stuff that are already in place, instead of being told that you try a dimmer out, 'cause I don't really wanna put the time and effort into doing my job, um, that, that song and dance is not gonna be listened to. Uh, we're very sorry and apologetic to have to be in front of the entire commission. Um, check the rules out. If we're, if we're not in the right place or doing things the right way, let us know which, which direction to go. We want resolution. Uh, we've been, some of the property has been in our family for several generations, uh, four generations. We've always strived to be great neighbors, um, don't wanna be negative people, it's not in our makeup. Not, we don't wanna be on the offense, we just want things to, to follow the process and the plans. And unfortunately, the, the system has been manipulated several times by the same individual. It's unfortunate, but it's very, very real. Um, all my files are open, if you wanna take a look at the, the claims and the restraining order. Some are very easily refutable, and not the personal stuff, you know, those claims are what they are, but as far as the definitions in the court case, you sign something that says, under penalty of perjury, this is true. You're welcome to look at anything I've got. I will get the court transcripts printed for you so you can verify yourself. And just, that defines the nature and the character of the individual that we're dealing with. And it's unfortunate, but it's real in the property issues, uh, there's been several people that have surrounding property. Um, there's been a trespasser order against a ninety-seven-year-old gentleman who just wanted to say, that's my land. And then the next thing you know, there's a sheriff shows up at his door and says you were trespassing. He was on his own land. We started out, um, by getting surveys done. Survey pins, most of them were located, they were there. The property started out as a tax forfeit property that was bought after a county sale, no requirements for surveys. It, it's a backward situation, and unfortunately, it all started right here. And we continue to be victims in this, and we were encouraged to no longer play the role of victim. You're gonna have to start playing offense, defend yourselves and, and go forward. We, we'd like you to have the opportunity to ask questions, address us anyway. Um, my contact information's available. Anything that we have, any, anybody that we've talked to, I don't want you to get second-hand information, but we'll tell you where stuff came from, but please, take this under advisement, please move forward, because it is a dangerous situation. And there's good people like Scott Scissors' families, there's kids out there. And it's not the first time that this individual's been involved in this, but, but as far as shying away and telling us that we've got other legal options, number one, do your job. We pay our taxes too, and we pay a hell of a lot of them. And, and with that, there's some expectations at times that the process is going to be open, fair, and transparent, and that's all we ask. So I'm not pleased with the way directions are, are going, and, and we don't wanna be here in front of you to address this, but what's been happening in Baker, it's developed out of a situation that started with us, has now blossomed and bloomed, uh, through, through different actions to affect people that, they've been great neighbors, uh, some for many, many years, and people that have been there twenty-five years are getting letters that they're not in compliance with stuff. It's absolute garbage. Check it out. If you, if you disagree with me, certainly let me know. I'm willing to have an open conversation anytime, anywhere, but there's, there's a lot of citizens that are being impacted in a negative way because this county has not done its job. And it's unfortunate, I don't wanna be critical, I appreciate what you do, but we're in a bad spot, and we'd like you to at least take the time to review it and come up with a direction and let us know what that is.
Thanks, Steve. We, we will look into it, we'll get something straightened out here, so. Steve, you know what direction you want, okay. Okay, any other citizens that would like to be heard this morning? Okay, we'll move on with the agenda. Departmental update, human resources. Good morning, Darren.
Good morning.
You're all pumped up, you got that plaque and...
Nah, I'm gonna put that in my office somewhere. Well, maybe on a lighter note, here, um, the all-important annual human resources update that I have for you. Um, I, you have some slides in your packets, um, due to some of the formatting and colors, not everything came through very good, so I put it in the, same, same information, just different, um, text and color, so it can be more easily read. To start off, uh, kinda going over the makeup of human resources. Let's get to this slide here. Okay. So, uh, as you probably know, um, I have two individuals work in my office. Melissa Young is, been with the county since two thousand and seven, and she's been with HR, uh, since two thousand and twelve. Jennifer Pearson, she works the, uh, HR coordinator position, and she's been with human resources since two thousand and eight. Um, I've got, I got there in two thousand and eleven and have been the, uh, HR director since then. The numbers that I've pulled for you are actually twenty-eighteen numbers, but I pulled them in, uh, twenty-nineteen. So the first slide that I'm showing you is kinda the breakup of what, uh, who's employed with Clay County. Uh, we have, at that time, five hundred and sixty-eight employees, uh, four hundred and fourteen full-time, twenty-two part-time, one twenty-eight variable hour, and four seasonal. The percentages have not changed that much, but we have added about twenty-four employees since, uh, twenty-eighteen, and I'll go through that a little bit later in some of the slides as well. And please ask questions as we go along, if you have any questions.
Darren, for the, for the public watching, can you explain what a variable hour employee...
Yes, variable hour employee, uh, can work no more than eighteen hour, or nineteen hours per week. And what they are, is they're the people that kinda fill in when full-timers are on vacation or sick or FMLA or something like that. A lot of the, some of the departments, especially juvenile detention and corrections, use a lot of variable hours to fill gaps. Um, variable hours are not subject to the county benefit program, and, uh, so there is no, um, county contribution that goes to them. So they are pretty vital in, um, making sure that we have enough people to fill the, fill the slots, especially in our twenty-four hour operations.
You, you used an acronym there, FMLA.
Oh, family medical...
Would you explain what that means?
Yeah, Family Medical Leave Act. It's when somebody gets, uh, twelve weeks of, uh, family leave for illness or sickness or something like that with a family member themselves.
Okay.
Okay? Sorry about that. Um, next slide is where all these people are located. Um, central admin includes HR, uh, information technology, information services, building maintenance, admin, uh, the VSO, commissioners, the extension and family service center. So that, central admin, as you see, even though we only have a few people, um, I grouped them all into this, central admin, and that's why you see sixty-eight people there. Uh, social services is by far one of our biggest departments, a hundred and twenty-nine people Uh, single versus married, actually have fifty-fifty split right now. Um, we're actually, have hired more single people this year. Uh, last year, we had forty-seven percent of our employee workforce was single, now it's up to fifty percent, uh, still with the five hundred and sixty-eight employees. Uh, home of record, this was, I, used to be a little bit more, um, fifty-fifty, but it looks like, uh, more of our employees are now being hired from the Minnesota area, Minnesota, um, less than the North Dakota area. This hasn't changed too much since twenty-eighteen. Male versus female. Uh, longevity, uh, which is kind of an interesting, uh, slide, over half of our employees have been here five years or less. Um, fifty-seven percent of our employees have been here five years or less. So we're having a younger and younger workforce. Uh, we kinda knew this was gonna start happening with the baby boomers retiring and everything, or hiring younger people. Um, fourteen percent of our employees have been here over twenty years, um, but in twenty-eighteen, that used to be sixteen percent. So it's showing a decrease in some of our longevity throughout the county. Age of our workforce is also showing that, uh, we have a younger workforce now. Uh, in twenty-eighteen, thirty-six percent of our workforce was under the age of thirty-five, and in twenty-nineteen, thirty-eight percent is under the age of thirty-five. Um, in twenty-eighteen, twenty-four percent of our, uh, workforce was over age fifty-six, and twenty-nineteen, twenty-two percent was over age fifty-six. We had a hundred and seventy-nine hires last year. Uh, this kinda is a breakdown of where we hired those people. If you look at juvenile detention, had sixty hires, a lot of them, they use a lot of variable hour employees, and they are much more fluid in, in their employment here. They, they have a tendency to come and go as they get full-time employment somewhere else or sometimes with us. Um, and so, uh, also with corrections and highway, that also includes, uh, there's summer engineers that they, they hire every summer, and then some variable hour snowplow drivers that we hired during the winter time. So those are the ones that we've hired. I'll show you a slide in a little bit on, um, how that has compared with, uh, previous years of hires.
I have a question, quick.
Sure.
What, what number is the new hires versus replacement?
Um, you mean brand-new people that have never worked here before? I don't have that information.
Basically new positions.
Oh, new positions?
Right.
Well, like, uh, I can think off the top of my head, the fifteen correctional officers that we hired last year. Um, we, uh, got, uh, five correctional sergeants now, which were actually, you know, previous correctional officers.
I just mean for the public's perspective, a hun, it looks like we added a hundred and seventy-nine positions in eighteen, and I just wanna clarify what...
Yeah.
Tell those are rehires.
Yeah, let me see.
I mean...
Right. Because...
They're filling positions.
The prior, the prior slide, you have, uh, we've added a hundred and fourteen since twenty-twelve, correct?
Uh, which slide are you talking about?
On my slide.
Oh, you're on, you're on there already. This is the hires by type.
Okay.
On the next slide.
Okay.
So we've hired eighty variable hour, full-time, so eighty-three, fourteen seasonal, two part-time.
I think what Commissioner Mojo was getting at is the hundred and seventy-nine, you know, we say that we had a hundred and seventy-nine new hires, they're to fill positions for people who left, most of them. So it's, I think that's the point that she was trying to make.
Yeah, there's not, we didn't add a hundred and seventy-nine new positions, let's put it that way. Those are, those are positions that people have left. Um, like I said, the variable hours is a high turnover, and some of these, you may have had a, a position open up, we hire somebody, and then they didn't make it through their, the year, or they didn't make it through their probationary period, so then we hire, have to hire another person for that, and that's happened several times throughout the year. Um, so that adds, even though you're losing one person, you may have to hire two, sometimes three, to, to replace them. Um, let's see here. These are the departures for twenty-eighteen. And like I said, where we have the most hires, we also have the most departures. Uh, like I said, a lot of those, uh, ADOs are, I'm sorry, in juvenile detention and law enforcement. Law enforcement mostly makes up the correctional facility. Public health, uh, you see, we had a lot of departures there. Most of that, again, is in our detox, which has, uh, quite a few variable hour, um, people in it as well. Um, union contract status, this is where we at. We have, uh, ten unions right now. Uh, last year, the juvenile counselors decertified, so they closed down their negotiations. We were actually in negotiations with them. I'm meeting with the detox nego, uh, union this afternoon, and then we still have correctional sergeants and new tenants. Correctional sergeants is a brand-new union, um, but they are still covered under the correctional officers bargaining unit, uh, until we get that new, new union up and running. Um, this is a new slide, um, to kinda show you the progress of, um, where we have been in, in the county since two thousand and twelve, that was the year after I got here. Um, I pulled some old files, uh, some old data, and like in two thousand and twelve, we had a total of fi, uh, four hundred and fifty-four people, and this year, when I last ran the, uh, stats, we had five hundred and sixty-eight. And then that kinda gives you a breakdown of the full-time, part-time, and variable hour people that we have hired. Um, the other thing that, uh, just kind of is a note, when the, the juvenile detention center expands, we'll probably be looking at more individuals there as well. Uh, as you know, that when the correctional facility was added, we added fifteen correctional officers there as well, so. This is the number of hires that we've had since twenty-fourteen, and as you can tell, it's, uh, steadily gone up each year. And I think some of that you have to attribute to is that, um, you know, we're the fourth largest growing county in the state right now, from the statistics that I've been given, and to take care of that, sometimes you have to up your, up your numbers as well. Um, the, the one thing about this is the variable hours, even though, um, you know, the variable hours only work nineteen hours a week and, and they don't get the benefits that everybody else, it still takes a lot of time, um, for HR to process them, to hire them, to go through in-processing, to get all their paperwork, to, uh, set them up in e-time, um, parent information has to be gathered, reciprocity stuff has to be gathered. So, you know, even though a variable hour may only be here a couple of hours a week, it still takes a lot of time for human resources. So if you have one full-timer, you know, gets benefits and stuff, but then if we have to hire two or three variable hours to make up a full-timer, that's still time that HR has, has devoted to that individual. And lastly, um, this is kinda what I'm looking at for twenty-nineteen. As you know, the market study's been approved for twenty-nineteen, and that is underway right now. I'm starting to collect updated PDQs from the departments. Um, we also, last year, uh, got a consultant for our benefit packages, and, uh, we're gonna be working with them closely to look at how we can improve our benefit packages for the county employees this year. Hopefully, we'll complete nego, uh, union negotiations fairly quickly. And also trying to look at, as you can see, when we're hiring a hundred and seventy-three or so individuals, trying to streamline the hiring process as much as possible. I am looking, this is the first time that I've even, um, projected this or, or requested this, that since I've been here, we've had three individuals, um, but as you know, Melissa Young is also a part admin, a lot of admin work, but she does a lot of, uh, human resources work as well. She does a lot of the advertising, she does a lot of the setting up of the, uh, interviews. Um, she does the in-processing for the variable hours. So she has a very big hand in, uh, human resources as well. And after looking at the amount of work, the amount of hires that we do, the amount of individuals that are employees that we continue to grow, um, I think this year, I would like to put in my budget to add a HR generalist to the human resources, um, department. Um, this is the first year where I've allowed some overtime hours for Melissa to get caught up on some of the work that she's had to do. And, um, so, we're, we're still working through that and how, how we're gonna do that, but this is the first time, and I kinda wanna bring it to your attention, that I would be asking for an HR generalist, uh, probably for the twenty-nine, twenty-twenty, uh, budget. Um, and, let's see, I think that is it. Right now, we have, uh, fifteen job openings on our website, six of them are for variable hour, nine are for full-time employees. And, uh, so I will open that up to questions.
Questions. Can you explain what a HR generalist does?
Um, actually, they do a lot of the things that Melissa is doing right now. They do a lot of the hiring, um, they're not necessarily specified in any, like, uh, like, um, Jennifer's a HR coordinator, she specializes in benefits. Um, it, just to give you an idea, when I was at the Shooting Star Casino, we had about nine hundred and fifty employees, and we had eight people in our human resources department. We had, uh, three generalists, two people doing the hiring, two people doing the benefits, and a supervisor, and an HR director, and an admin. Um, so that, that kinda gives you, now, a little bit different between the casino and here, yeah, but it kinda gives you a, a feeling for, you know, what we're dealing with when we continue to grow as a, as a county, and having to maintain that with the amount of people that we can support, so. Okay? Any other questions?
Uh, just a point of clarification, when you mentioned, um, probably when the, um, regional juvenile center is opened up, there would be the need for additional staffing there, and I, I think it's important for people to understand that that would, that would also then be funded, uh, through our eleven part, eleven county partnership. So it's, it's slightly different than, than just what we add, you know, for just our Clay County people. So the...
True.
The funding piece of it is, is different.
Yep, but the, um, HR piece is not.
They're, they're still...
They still have to be processed, interviewed.
Yeah, they, they still fall within the statistics of Clay County.
Yes, correct.
However, uh, unique to them, we get help from others to pay for that.
Yes, correct. And that would be a great HR generalist as well, for those funds. So any other questions?
You can propose that in your budget.
I have one more comment. I'm excited about the, the market study. I think that, uh, in conversations with PIC over the last year, that's something that is definitely needed, so we're, I think, responding to the problems that we've seen. But we need to continue to reinvent how we retain and recruit individuals in, in a, in a professional world that's changing. Uh, I think we have to be open to finding new ways to recruit, and the old ways didn't really, you know, don't really work as, as well. So with that market study, uh, in, in your project goals for nineteen, I think that's something that I would like to see, um, we add as a focus, is how, how can we do this better? Where can we reach these individuals better?
Um, yeah, and, and it's, uh, you know, a lot of that, or some of that has to do with the tide of the times of having very low unemployment, uh, we have a lot of turnover, people are leaving for better jobs, um, they're not leaving, you know, when I got here in two thousand and eleven, we had more applicants than we knew what to do with sometimes. Um, now it's tough to get any applicants, and the only applicants that we're getting are people that are looking to get a higher wage most of the time. You know, there's not a lot of unemployment out there where people will take things for a, for a lesser ca, uh, cost, so.
Thanks, Darren.
Hey, thank you.
I think we'll jump ahead to item number seven. We've got a bid opening scheduled for nine twenty, so Dave and Eric, you guys wanna take
I believe Eric's got a bidder sheet for us on our, uh, our bid opening. This is for the Park Avenue project in the city of Glendon. Uh, it's a cooperative project with the city of Glendon, and then there is federal aid tied to the project, so there will be a few conditions that we will need to, uh, depending on the bids, uh, contingently award here when we get to that point.
Thank you, Rick.
Uh, this project was advertised and opened last year in the month of, of May, I believe it was. it was. Bids came in a little high, so we did a little redesign work on the typical section. We took a look at the project in bid scope, we did a lot of the railroad work, it's already been completed last fall, so we're hoping for bids that come in within our budget, but as you can see, our engineer's estimate is five million, seven hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-five cents.
How did that change with your revisions? Did that number...
Yep, so what we did is we took a really good look at all the existing prices that we had, the bid prices we had, we took a look at our engineer's estimate bid prices, adjusted them a little bit for what we might have seen as far as market, and like I said, we also reduced our typical section, so instead of having like twenty inches of sand, we went with twelve inches of sand and a little bit more gravel, seemed like the price was about the same, and then you could lower your amount of aggregate coming in, and then reduce the amount of material going out too, so it was kind of a double deal, so.
So the engineer's estimate before was what?
I think we were five point one, five point two maybe?
Now it's five point seven.
Correct, yep. You know, and I think the price of fuels are down a little bit, and price of asphalt was down, now I think it might be creeping up a little bit. I think I've heard labor costs are going up, so I guess we'll have to see what the rest of the market is. We tried to get this thing on as early as we could, I don't know that there's too many bids that have been out this year yet, so I'm hoping that helps. I heard some people have bids, some people don't, so I guess, should we start?
Yep. The first bid is from R.L. Larson, from St. Cloud, Minnesota.
There is one addendum, so we'll make sure that they acknowledge that.
The bid bond is present, the amount of five percent. The unit prices are there. The addendum one is acknowledged, and the proposal's signed, and the grand total is six million, six hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifteen cents. That's six million, six hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three The next bid is from Salim Brothers, from Holly, Minnesota. All right, the bid bond is present, the amount of five percent. All the unit prices are filled in. Addendum one is acknowledged on here, and the proposal's signed, and the bid amount is six million, five hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. That's six million, five hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven The last bid we have here is from Dakota Underground, from Fargo, North Dakota. Looks like the bid bond is present, the amount of five percent. Make sure all the unit prices are filled in. The denim one is acknowledged, and the proposal's signed, the grand total is seven million, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. That's seven million, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-five cents.
Well, it's a little high, I guess. I think maybe we need a week to review these things, we'll have to tabulate them, make sure there's no errors, discuss with our committee as well as the city council, and see which direction we want to go with this thing.
How much over the bid last year was it?
I think last year, we were at six point two, so it's about three hundred thousand more than last year.
Or it's close to six point three, I think.
Yep.
But yet, we designed some things to improve that.
We'll have to see where these numbers are coming.
See where the unit prices change, but yeah, we revised typical section like Dave mentioned, but yeah, that's really the major revision that was made.
In our efforts, we were trying to cut off one and a half million dollars from last year's bid, which would have been down in that five, seven range that our estimate was, and if a wonder is or another, I guess it didn't quite work out that way. If we could table this for a week and bring it back next week.
Yeah, I'd like our tracking committee to discuss this, and we need to see what the, how, what this impact would be to each entity.
Yep, exactly.
Involved as well, and the federal dollars, and that could have a significant impact on our five-year plan, so.
Okay, everybody agreed, we'll table until next week, so, thank you.
Would I be able to cover my other item quick?
Yeah.
Jen, item number one is our updated snow and ice policy. We reviewed this with our highway committee, and one of the recommendations they had was to send it out to all the townships, just to gather input. In addition to that, we also did bet this with the school bus transportation officials, as they also are pretty heavily involved with our policy, and we did not get any comments back. As you can see there on the document, read, for the most part, we tried to, we tried to cover those cases that are on weekends and holidays, and those are the ones that we've sometimes drawn the most heat on, and we, you know, so we didn't really revise or change a lot of stuff, but we did kind of make it more clear, I believe, in areas that there's, during normal working days, we have one to three inches of snow, we try to get out at 6:00 a.m. and have all roads open by the end of the day. Weekends or holidays of one to three inches, we start at 6:00 a.m. and pretty much work the entire day and do what we can. If we don't get them all done that day, we'll get out the next day and clear them. Weekends four or more, we're going to start at five, and there again, our goal is always to, within a twelve-hour period, have the roads cleared, I guess, if we can.
The only comment I have is on the general comments, number two. You know, if we get a large snow event in October, if you're saying if the ground roads aren't frozen, you're not going to travel on them?
We don't put the plow trucks on there because of the danger of the plow catching and running over it, so the motor graders are strictly on that. It is a little unfortunate because it takes a little longer in those odd cases, same thing happens in the spring too, when you get those, yep, those warmer weathers, but...
And you can do it if you're really good and are able to feather your plow up a little bit, but boy, he's bounce a little bit, and, you know.
Anything else? Any comments? Discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in as second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, held in favor of the motion, certified by the same eye. At the same time, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Dave, will you let all the schools and everybody know that that's been passed then? So, yeah, we sent that out.
Okay, next item is solid waste update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Because the recorder's on, it's my mistake. Oh, in time.
Okay.
Kirk, you're done. You're already, that was the quickest report you've ever...
I need as quick as I can. Those people that just walked out. Those people that walked out should be, we should try to get down to downstairs so that they're aware that there's another bid, otherwise it'll really look bad if we're open a bid after they've left.
Under unique case, I did check with our attorney staff, and asked if we could open it, and he said if it was here by nine o'clock, we could.
It was delivered to the wrong department. I mean, it was here, it was just delivered to the wrong department.
It appears to be a mailroom sorting there.
Can we give it a second to, I think somebody's going to run down to try to let those other, I think it's important to pay those other contractors aware, just in case it changes things.
The bid is, it says Stephis on here, and you've, I'm not exactly sure who the bidder is, but we'll tear into it here. You feel it's okay to tear into this?
Yeah, from everything I've been able to pick up in the past couple minutes, it was a mailroom there, and not attributable to the bidder.
Wait till we... Well, we can wait.
Did James run down there?
I thought somebody ran down there to check, but I just think you were...
James went after him.
It doesn't look like it could be one of them.
It might not even be a bid, to be honest. It says Clay County Auditor.
Well, why don't you, we just won't read it, I think you can open it.
Sure. If you want, I can take a look.
Yeah, you want to do that, Steve?
I don't know if there's a bid in the office.
Well, when she came up, she said it was a bid, so.
It's pretty thin.
Yeah.
No, this is not a bid.
Okay, never mind.
Okay.
Okay, Kirk.
Thank you very much, thank you. Looked good, too. I appreciate that, thank you. I told Kirk back there, I get excited all the time about talking trash, but he reminds me it's only garbage, so I'll be as brief as I can. We had a pretty good year this last year. I've got a really, really good crew, as most of you know, my crew, they just, they work really, really hard, they give good value to what they do. What I'll do is I'll just briefly go over what we topless on, when we fancy slides or anything like that, so just bear with me. This last year at the landfill, we took in about forty thousand tons of material. Of that material, about thirty thousand tons of it was mixed from this was solid waste. We got a heck of a lot of contaminated soil this last year. I think part of the issue from what we got is there's a lot of work that's being done in the city of Moorhead, and as a result of that work, we got quite a lot of contaminated soil out there, so there was a real increase in that last year. We took approximately nine thousand tons of material over to Perm last year. As you remember, and may remember, the first six thousand tons that we take over there, we don't pay a tiffy fee because we receive six thousand tons back from them in fines that we use for daily cover. It's worked out fairly well. The facility over in Perm has, you don't know, has had some problems in the past, but it's doing really, really pretty well right now. Commissioner Campbell was the president chair last year, and he helped steer it in the right direction. I think financially, it's doing really, really well for the first time in a long time, and I think we're heading in the right direction there. We got an air permit at the landfill last year, which is a big deal deal. The size of the landfill is such that we had to get an air quality permit. The thing that was kind of irritating for me is we paid approximately fourteen thousand dollars to prepare the permit, and by the time we got done with fees at the pollution control agency, it was about thirty-one thousand dollars in permit fees to the PCA, which does not make sense to me at all. But we do have the air quality permit, which is a good thing. In addition, we, during the summertime, we have three variable hours, folks, they're high school kids, basically their main responsibility is pick paper and do any other things that we do out there. One of the major things they did last year is they planted about two hundred trees. We did that work in conjunction with soil and water district. It's, you know, it's going to be good in probably twenty-five years when the trees grow up, but it's primarily on the north side, and it looks really pretty good, so. In addition, we constructed two more paper catchers. Paper catchers are put at the working place, at the landfill, trying to keep the paper within the landfill. We're really, really trying hard to be good neighbors out there, it's very, very difficult to do. We have prairie breezes that cause all kinds of problems, and the paper catchers help. We bought a transfer trailer last year, our transfer trailer, the previous one we had from the city of Moorhead, and it just was running on Band-Aids and Baylor wire, so it was time to get a new one. We got a new one, and it's worked out well. In addition, we bought a pickup truck, we bought the pickup truck in July. It still has not been constructed yet, they haven't built it yet. The good news is that we get a 2019 truck for 2018 price, so take it for what it is. Last year, we had egg pesticide container collection at the landfill, we did that for a full week, we had approximately four hundred pounds of plastic jugs come in from the smaller ones, and approximately twenty of the larger containers that came in. So it's been very well received, the folks that come out there, and they do a really, really good job of that.
Again, what do we do with that stuff then?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, essentially what happens with that is there's a company down on, it's out in Missouri, they send a truck up, and essentially, we just load the truck, and they take it. It doesn't, there's no cost to us at all, so it's a really, really good program. What we plan on doing next year, the big thing is we have cell expansion out at the landfill. With that cell expansion, we hope to have another additional eight to ten years of the capacity at the landfill. Again, it really depends on, you know, how much material we get, how good a job we do compacting it, so that's just an estimate, just the best guess we have, but approximately eight to ten years. As part of the landfill expansion, we're going to look at trying to optimize the gas system either further. We've done really, really well as far as the flare, the flare's been running really well, it's been done very well, but we feel like we can get more gas out of the landfill and perhaps heat some of the buildings out there, because I think that's something that is a positive thing. The other item that we're going to be doing out there as part of the cell expansion is the leachate. As you know, the leachate is essentially coffee, it's the garbage coffee, so when the snow or the rain or whatever runs through the garbage, it leaches out, we collect it, and we take it over to Fargo to be treated at the wastewater plant. It's very expensive, we spent about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year with treating the leachate and transportation, so we're looking at different ways to try and minimize that, and try and minimize those costs. Part of the biggest thing at the landfill that we'll have going on next year is Larry's going to be leaving. He's been out there for quite a while, it'll be a big loss, but I think that we'll, we're going to try and do some things a little differently out there. I'll probably be able to save some money, and we'll be able to utilize that position in a different sort of way, so that's something that we'll be looking at. As far as the recycling, we have the collections again this year at Holly and Barnesville, Moorhead and Hitterdall, very well received. I mean, the communities really, really came out, and they really, really support us. As far as the recycling, we have the collections again this year at Holly and Barnesville, Morehead and Hittardall. Very well received. I mean, the communities really, really came out and they really, really supported us. We had local volunteer groups that helped direct traffic and, you know, help with the survey and that. Again, the communities got really, really involved and they were very, very helpful. For the first time this year, we went out to steam show. We had recycling containers out there. That was really, really a positive thing. Joe Peterson on the solid waste advisory committee was instrumental in helping us get out there, and we were out there. We worked with some 4H clubs to help with the pickup. It worked out very, very well. Bottle recycling, you all have probably seen at the Holiday Stations. Steve just told me we even have one in beautiful Fargo, which kind of surprised me, but essentially, we're working with a local group called Heartland Industries. Heartland Industries employ the disabled folks to help with that, and we have bottles currently at all the Holiday Stations in the Morehead area. Recently, we just expanded that program to the Barnesville area, and we have bottles in C store down there, and we just met with Holly City Council here the night before last, and they're very interested in doing something out there in Holly, so we'll probably be doing something out there as well. For the first time this year, we offered a master recycling compost program. I was very excited about this, as Shannon did, put this thing together, and essentially for six weeks, we had people came in and they learned about garbage. They learned all kinds of things about garbage, whether it was landfilling, recycling, composting, it's everything you can even imagine. And after that period of time, they'll put in 30 hours in volunteering for the county or other activities, and at the end of that, then they will become master recyclers. We're going to try and do it again this next year. We had eight people that were involved with it. We'd like to have more people, obviously, but I think it was a really, really good start, and I was really pretty excited about it. Obviously, Shannon will continue to provide presentations to schools and any service groups, so if y'all have any ideas where she can go or if I can go anywhere, just let me know and we'll go. Next year for the recycling, you know, this is kind of fantasy world, but I still am trying to like to see a MERC, public-private partnership. Markets are really, really bad right now, so, you know, it's going to be very, very challenging to try and get that done, but that's something that's still on my to-do list. The Household Has Waste, they had a egg pesticide collection in conjunction with the Department of Egg. It's something that's done every year. They were very, very successful with that. Again, it's another program that people really appreciate, and we're glad to be able to provide that service. This last year, Julie collected 106,000 pounds of Household Has Waste, which is pretty significant when you think about it. In addition, I don't know if you all remember, but we have an exchange, and she gave away or exchanged approximately 12,000 pounds of household materials that people came in and they reused. So it's really, really a pretty positive program. Next year, what she wants to try and do, if she can, is she wants to try and minimize the amount of non-hazardous waste that she gets in there. It's, you know, it's basically, it's just misunderstanding from people of what they can bring and what they can't bring in. Electronics, last year, we did approximately 1,300 pounds of batteries and cell phones, which is pretty impressive when you think about it, and we did over 240,000 tons, or pounds, rather, of TVs and computers and anything that goes into the computer, like a printer or a tower or whatever. And in addition, we collected about a ton of fluorescent bulbs. That's a combination between the business and household, so it's a very, very significant number. It's, one thing I should point out, and I know you all realize this, but this is a service that y'all provide at no cost to the homeowner as well as the Household Has Waste facility. It's a very significant and important service that you provide, and, you know, I think that the folks in the community should appreciate that. Take Jack back, the pumpkins, the famous pumpkins. We collected about 35 tons of pumpkins this last year. We took the pumpkins out to the compost and organic farm, and they're being organically composted even as we speak under the snow.
Kirk, what, how does that number compare to last year?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, the number is up slightly, and the thing that is really interesting about that, there was one drop-off site that we didn't have in Morehead because of the construction that they had going on, and so I think next year, we'll have that site available, and I think it will be even higher than it was this year. So again, it was very well received. I mean, we publicized it very well, and, you know, people were really into it. And in addition to that, we also recycle holiday lights and recycled approximately, well, over 1,000 pounds of holiday lights, which is fairly significant when you think about it. I've heard of Plastic Bag Task Force. One of the things that we're trying really hard to do is to try and educate the public a little bit more on the plastic bags and try and figure out if there's a different way to take care of your material rather than the single-use plastic bags. It's really taking off right now, and right now, there's a collaborative effort between the city of Fargo and Clay County. We're holding a contest between West Fargo fifth graders, Fargo fifth grader, a class of fifth graders in Fargo, class in Morehead fifth graders, and hopefully a class in DGF fifth graders. Essentially, it's going to be a contest to see who can recycle the most plastic bags. So I think that's a really, really, it's taken off. We've gotten an awful lot of exposure. In fact, Darla is one of my roster employees. She's on Valley News Live right now talking about the contest. Next year, the big items for the waste, solid waste department, hopefully, we're going to get some funding for our transfer station. People that know me say I'm the eternal optimist, and now I am, but we're.
I was going to say, it's good to be optimistic.
We're going to work real hard and probably a little smarter than we did last year, so I'm fairly confident that we're going to get it, get some funding. There was a bill that was introduced, Senator, or sorry, Representative Lean in Marquardt introduced a bill, House File 177, last week. I understand from Senator Ekin, he also introduced a companion bill, although it doesn't have a number yet, so it's a very good first step. And then the final thing that we're going to be working on is tipping fee and the service fee. We need to take a hard look at that and see where we're at and try and ensure that the solid waste program will remain solid for the long term. So with that, I tried to be as brief as I could. I could talk forever, as these guys know, but unless you have any other questions, that's all for me.
Thanks, Kirk. Been a busy year in solid waste, and it looks like it's going to be another busy year coming up, so you and your staff do a great job. Frank?
On this leachate, is that so contaminated that we can't just put it on land or something? Does that have to be treated?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, there's different ways to treat it. One of the things about leachate is it's a really significant odor, and one of the concerns that I have about putting it on land application is that the odor of the neighbors out there. We are looking at trying to do some different things, as I mentioned before, that will help cut the cost, but that is one of the things that we're looking at trying to do.
Another question, contaminated soil. Where, where's the contaminated soil coming from?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, it's basically what it's contaminated with is it's contaminated with petroleum, and so essentially, what happens is that it comes from construction sites. We got quite a bit along First Avenue over there. We got quite a bit from the new, over on Eighth Street in Maine, where they're building the ushers and that building right across from Dairy Queen there. And essentially, it's from like old gas stations and things like that.
Does the state still have a program where they pay for cleanup of contaminated?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, they do have a program to do that, and we get some of the funding, we get the funding directly from the contractor, but the contractor gets reimbursed by the state for a portion of that.
Thank you, Kirk.
Thank you much.
Good report. Okay, Department of Veterans Affairs update, last, department update, last but not least. Kirk?
Good morning. Veteran Service Office, first of all, just to say thank you to our volunteers. Currently have 16, and then Bonnie and my colleague Jennifer, who does the same exact thing that I do in the office. Our office is comprised of the volunteers who do 12 to 4:30 every day, Monday through Friday. Bonnie does eight to noon, and then me and Jennifer are full-time in the office, so I wanted to say first of all, thank you to them, because the office is, can't run by itself, me solo, so. Big highlight this year, we got a new software, veterans software. It's called Veterans Spect. We signed an agreement with North Dakota to try to lower the price on that software, so that's, IT enjoyed it, because our old software was stored on the network in the county, and this one's stored out in the cloud, so the storage capacity is larger. Plus, we can see North Dakota veterans, too, in this program. It also allows us to submit claims paperless to the regional office. In most cases, not all, all the regional office organizations have that capability, but allows us to do that. We also incorporated signature pads, which as soon as you capture their signature, we can do more over the phone or via internet, because we have their signature. If we get their approval, we can actually click on and sign the appropriate paperwork, and they don't have to come in and do that, so. We average probably three to four appointments a day with multiple walk-ins, so we are very busy every day. Claims range from easy to a lot of research to pretty hard ones, so. Our primary job is service connection claims, meaning we try to, if they were injured on active duty, we try to service connect them for injury, therefore getting them VA benefits, healthcare benefits, and hopefully, or maybe in most cases, compensation monthly to do that, compensation or service connection range from 0% to 100% service connected, so we have a mirage of veterans in Clay County that fall in between there, which in terms brings millions of dollars back to the county, and our intent is that they spend it in Clay County. Don't know that factual number, but that is the intent, so. Multiple outreach, speaking events. We do a lot of work in the evening, weekends, well, quite frankly, anywhere we're at. If they're wearing a hat and identify themselves, we make sure they're taken care of or start the conversation about benefits, and if they're not, they come see us, so. Our main goal, or one of our achievements this year, we started outreach program once a month, believe the first Tuesday of every month, at Ulin at the Viking Manor in the afternoon, where Ulin folks and the folks up there can come see us there instead of driving all the way here, which my first time, that is a far drive out there. So, and then we remotely log into the VA and the Clay County from there, assist them from there, so that's going very well. On top of our claims, we do ultimate honors, death benefits. We work with local and state and federal agencies to get our veterans benefits, and if we can't do it, speaking of the county and the family assistance center, there's multiple programs outside of my office in that building that can better assist, so we don't let them go. We can't help you, let's go down the hall and try to get help there, so. Outreach, Ulin, speaking events, too many to name. One highlight for me was a prayer service I directed for a World War II vet who was a radio operator that depicted or depicted or whatever the Hiroshima, so he was, the family asked me to come over to the hospital, and that was a tough one, so, but rewarding. So we're seeing an increase in veterans with multiple issues, multitude of issues, but a lot lately with nursing home assisted living help getting in that age, where, what do we have that can help benefit our veteran that's entering or is in, or I'm actually trying to service connect a Ulin nursing home Korean vet right now, which is going very well, so we work with those. Aside from the structure and the daily outreach and stuff, we help veterans move. We take in furniture, which we deliver to West Fargo to a holding area in case our vets need furniture, so. Never boring, never, always, always on the go doing something, sometimes weird, too, so, but it's all for the good of the veterans. VA was not during the government shutdown, was not affected, so the disability pay and benefits, we still move forward with that. Two new volunteers this year. Jennifer was appointed to the Education Committee for the Minnesota CBSO Assistance Association, so she's advanced her, I think she's offering her knowledge to that organization, which is good for them. We received the Operational Enhancement Grant again this year. We closed our one and was awarded the grant for this year. Now, that grant allows us to be, well, self-sustained in our department. You know, we don't, that gives us training, equipment, and things we might need to, for our department, so. That's why you don't see me up here very much, but I enjoy being up here. We held that fourth annual Veterans Conference for Clay County at the VFW. We're working on our fifth annual for next summer. I attended the CBSO training in Nisswa and Walker this year. Those are the two standard ones, and then our Accreditation National Training that we get our CEUs at, that was in Reno. Me and Jennifer attended that. This year is in Cleveland. I don't know why our spouses aren't going with us this year, probably because it's in Cleveland, but they are staying home. I don't understand. So Veterans Court's still going strong. I think we have four, four or five. I think it's going to be four here by the end of the month. So we meet every Wednesday during lunch hour for a team meeting prior to the court to discuss the vets, and then we go into court and deliver the good or bad news, and so that's an 18-month program, four-phase program, which they get accepted. Fourth year with Clay County, starting that, and I'll end with thanks for your support. Probably don't get enough of that for the veterans of Clay County, but 100%, we've always got support from commissioners, and we continue to drive on with what we do.
You do great work, Kirk, and your volunteers and your staff. I mean, it's really important work, and I hear nothing but positive things from people and veterans in the county and in the community, so we really appreciate that and the work you do.
That helps, I'm kind of a little bit loopy, too, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I do hear that.
We do hear that.
I'm glad. That's all I have. I appreciate it. Thank you, and.
Any questions for?
Here's to another good year.
Well, thank you for excellent work you do.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Enjoyable.
And tell your staff and volunteers we appreciate your business. Okay. Steve, you want to do the construction engineering?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We have two change orders before you. Change order number 20 pertains specifically to the Law Enforcement Center. It's significant today because this will be the last change order coming from the Law Enforcement Center. After today, they'll, everything has been completed according to construction engineers, and it will be going to, any further issues will be warranty issues, and so the change order before you this morning is $49,956. Just to touch on some highlights, and if there's any questions, certainly can follow up with that. PR number 18, revision of hardware locker in the family restrooms. Majority of this work has to do with the locker rooms. Initially, law enforcement officers were going to be responsible for their own locks. They were going to do pad locks, and there became some concern about. It dealt specifically with, there may come a point in each investigation where the person is not free to leave and prior to that, doors allow them to come and go from either side. And so, they made revisions to ensure that that would not happen. Training review, PR twenty-three is training room AV equipment modifications. This request became on behalf of Mark Sloan and some of the issues that they're having with being able to hear things and speakers and so they needed to do some, some different changes to the computer programming to make sure that that would work properly. PR twenty-four is a code issue that needed to be changed with the water heater. We talked about PR twenty-five with acoustical panels within those interview rooms, the issues of being able to hear on the other side of the wall and so hopefully that will take care of that. PR fifteen has to do with rain leaders and again, they just need to make sure that, that they protected, moved some of those as far as protection in the Sallyport area so the officers couldn't inadvertently back into them and bust those. Excuse me, CR sixteen, retract, retractable extension cords were utilized for, at the press of the police department. And what this does is it charges their vehicles and all the equipment in there. It's a cord that attaches to the top of, through the ceiling and that will get, get everything, increase the, have their electricity while they're in the, in the site. Also CP eighteen, remove of the old approach up on the north side. We took out the old homes. There were some driveways that were still there and so they're looking to, to take those approaches out and put in new curves in those different areas. Any questions?
Any questions for Steve on this, Board's wishes?
Motion to approve the change order, second.
Motion and a second to approve the change order in the Law Enforcement Center. Any further discussion?
I just, I would note for, for the Board's knowledge that enclosing this out will have roughly three hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars remaining between owner contingencies and contractor contingencies. And so, we'll be working with Lori and how to, to adjust those into, into the project.
That's on the LEC.
LEC.
Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. All the same side, motion carries. Okay, Steve.
Change order twenty-one before you here deals specifically with the jail. Just touch on a couple of different issues. PR sixty-two, mechanical inspection mods for laundry equipment. Basically, one of the things that came out in code is they needed to have air compressor that added that specifically kicked, kicked out to ensure that we didn't have any fires in the building. So, PR sixty-two dealt with that. CP twenty-eight is also a larger number. We had to establish in phase two, we'll be, we'll be having a permanent laundry and they had to take one portion of the corrections facility and make the temporary laundry and they had to fit up plywood enclosures there. There CP twenty-nine is again a code issue, the boiler plant, we have our new boiler required to have a catwalk that had two entrances and exits from that. And so, that was the findings of that. And also the combustion, CP thirty deals with the air fumes on the top of the building. The air was getting into the facility and not allowing our boilers to heat up properly. And so, that adjustment was made there. The total, total change request before you here is also forty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars and again, would have no, no effect on the guaranteed maximum price.
Questions for Steve on this?
Remove approval of change order number twenty-one.
For the motion and a second for the change order number twenty-one, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All the same side, motion carries. Thanks, Steve. Okay. James, request for approval of proposal to change organizational structure in West Central Regional Juvenile Center.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioner. I'm here today to request organizational structure change at the juvenile center. I'm requesting to add an assistant director as well as converting two current line positions to supervisor lines. Currently, our administration consists of me and two supervisors. We got a lot of staff. As Darren's thing showed that we're doing a lot of hiring, a lot of variable hour staff. Right now, our secure supervisor, about twenty-four full-time staff and up to thirty variable hour staff that she's trying to supervise, leaves little time for her to, to do anything other than meet the minimum standards with those staff. Like Commissioner Campbell said, a lion's share of the costs, I guess, are part of that eleven county collaborative, one of those positions. So, did everybody get a chance to look at the packet or do you have any questions? I'm also looking to kind of mirror, I guess, Bemidji's structure. Bemidji has a facility about the size of ours that's going to be, in fact, we're going to be a little bit bigger and trying to mirror some of the organization chart that they have there.
I think based on Darren's numbers, you had what, ninety-one employees right now, was it?
No, it's, should be fifty, is it?
Oh, I thought it was.
Well, with the variable hour.
How many?
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two, twelve, see. And when everything is done, you'll probably have in excess of a hundred employees and you'd have three supervisors.
Yes.
If you maintain the current structure, yeah. We had a lot of discussion about this at the Advisory Committee meeting last week with the other counties and everybody was very supportive, I think, of the change. So, Kevin, the good.
Yeah, I, I was going to mention that too, that it got, this recommendation got high support from our member counties and it is important to, to note that, you know, this is an operation that's twenty-four seven, seven days a week and, you know, and you have to have somebody who can be in charge and make calls during all of those times. And so, I, I, this, this makes sense. You know, it's, it's growing, but it's, it's something that needs to be done, so.
And that variable hour piece is quite a bit to manage. It saves quite a bit of money, this staffing, but it's, it's quite, I guess, supervision intensive.
Well, again, this is all directly related to our, our work with our member counties. I mean, there's a little bit of, of changing that may be going on in, in non-secure too with your whole establishment, but the vast majority of it has to deal with, with the secure portion and with the full support of our eleven county members. I would move approval of the reorganizational structure as presented. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just have a comment. I do see that you have a note with the recommendation from the Minnesota Department of Corrections from last July stating that an addition of this magnitude is something that would be warranted. So, I just want that to be noted.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. All the same side, motion carries. There you go, James, thanks. Okay, Georgia, come on. I love that Georgia's talking a bit.
I apologize for Joe and I not making it this morning. Joe was dealing with snow issues and I myself, it was a Monday, we had, with housekeeping, we had some issues going on this morning. So, we apologize we didn't make it.
Here's your plaque.
Thank you.
Thank you for helping us with the project.
I received a resignation for a part-time custodial position over at the Law Enforcement Center. I'm looking to request authorization to replace the part-time position. It would be grade one, or excuse me, step, grade level four, step one. And the position would be Monday through Friday and that's a permanent position.
I think I'm rushing to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All the same side, motion carries.
That was a long wait.
Yeah, that's the way it works. One, one that takes is the quickest has to wait the longest, so sorry. Okay, we have a closed session planned for probationary evaluation of county administrators. So, it should be fun, so.
Do you committee reports first or is this?
No.
Okay. And this was your, was your suggestion to go close session?
Well, typically we go.
It's been.
That was my recommendation, I guess, as chair when I set it up.
We've done that. That's what we've done at Bass.
Well, it's been, some have wanted it open too. I know P J used to always have his own. It's up to the, it's up to the administration.
Steve, what do you want?
I'm, I'm open to either, whatever's the.
Well, it's already on the agenda for close.
Okay. Have a motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All the same side, motion carries. Yeah, we are, our session is back open and.
Commissioner Whalen, I will make a motion to end the probationary period of our administrator and recommend a staff adjustment.
May I second that motion?
We have a motion and a second on the county administrator's position.
And, and if I can add, I, you know, I think that was part of the original offer was that once, once the probationary period was over, that we would consider an increase. And so, I think we're following through with, with what we had promised as part of the hiring process.
And we had a very positive review of Mr. Larson's work, so.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. All the same side, motion passes. Okay. Okay, we have our committee reports is the only thing left on the agenda. Jenny?
I have two weeks. I missed last week due to a flu issue at my house, so I apologize for that. I attended the Cass-Clay Food Systems Commission and we had good reports and appointed two new at-large members. We had a report from Ms. Melissa Sobelak from the Great Plains Food Bank, hunger in Cass and Clay County. Through their surveys, it was identified that thirty-two percent of children in Cass and Clay County experienced some sort of food insecurity in a week. Eight percent of children skip a meal daily and so that is an important numbers to note. The good news is that they're continuing to have great donations and have developed a network to make sure that they're reaching out to the local food banks to deliver those foods as well. I attended a PIC committee meeting last, or two weeks ago in regards to the attorney's office. Commissioner Whalen reported on that last week. I attended the open house that Governor Walz had in town. I appreciate him reaching out to outstate Minnesota, specifically a small business in Clay County. It was exciting to host, see them host that. I attended a metro, or Planning Commission meeting where we approved five new solar, rural solar farms. That was directly the result of us passing our solar energy ordinance and so those will happen in the new, north part of Clay County and had no opposition to those. And I think that's also the result of developing good setbacks so that neighbors didn't have concerns. We also are now looking for a representative for rural Clay County to serve on the Planning Commission and, and based on our comments in the last six months in terms of recruiting people to serve on those, I would recommend anyone that applies for that, come before us to interview such as we do for the watersheds. It's important for us to get to know them and know where they stand on certain issues, but also important to have that dialogue back and forth. I attended the MetroCog meeting last week and, sorry, I have that somewhere. Have new members on that because of elections and so forth. We talked about the performance measures for the twenty-nine safety targets, approved that, approved fifty-three thirty-nine transit grant application, talked and appointed the Matbus Transit Authority Consultant selection. That's an important conversation that we've had a lot lately. And there will be a metropolitan transportation plan, public engagement information meetings going on and that's really important to get the input from the public in terms of what they want the transportation plans to look like. That will happen in downtown Fargo. As soon as MetroCog has the flyer for that, I've asked to forward that to the administrators so that we can also outreach to our networks. I, in terms of future meetings, they've talked about how have, finding places to have host meetings has been a problem and so I said our Law Enforcement Center could be a good opportunity for that. I had our executive director talk about the shutdown, the federal shutdown in terms of how that could negatively affect MetroCog in terms of the short term. They're good right now, but they are currently waiting on funds to reimburse consultants. So, that is a large number. If the shutdown goes longer than a month, there could be some significant issues in terms of the regional area for us in that. We are having further discussion with enclave development with the remodel project. We've secured some federal funds to do that. If that works, they've identified some area in the Old City Hall in Fargo that they would relocate to, to do the remodels. So, that looks good. And I've had a lot of discussion in the last week with some neighbors in terms of some watershed, the watershed meeting last week. And last night, I attended Baker Township, Baker for Alliance Townships meeting and, the two gentlemen that spoke before you were two of twelve people that spoke last night with significant concerns for how the land management issues out there are going and the tension that seems to be rising. And so, anything that we can do, Steve, to address what is within our control to address, we really need to get on that. I would hate to see this bubble up into something like the other one that we've dealt with for the two-plus years and I believe that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell.
Yes, thank you. On the January fifteenth, Tuesday, after our board meeting, we did, we did meet with Kirk regarding reviewing the solid waste budget and as you heard him talk about this morning, the, you know, the, the way we use tipping fees and our service fee on our property taxes. So, we are trying to put together how, how that might look to meet his goals and objectives that he talked about today. And then on Thursday, we did have a Regional Juvenile Center meeting at, in the morning and that, that went very well. The main topic, of course, was the restructuring that Jamie brought forward today and that we approved. We did get an opportunity to do our tour of, of the construction site for the first time since, and it's, it's a mess over there right now where they're working on it, but it's a good mess that's showing progress and our members were, were pretty excited to see that and, and so I think that's, that's going very well. We have had some. We have had some, there was, there's been some interest from other outside counties wanting to now become members, and we've said no to that at this point in time. We want to make sure that once this new facility is full, that we can handle the longevity of our, the current members that we have, however, any way, shape, or form, that we can utilize the facility for non-members. We certainly want to do that because that ultimately keeps the cost down for all of us, so, so we, that's our goal right now is to, once, once the new facility opens, we want it to, to function to its full capabilities, and, and we're pretty sure that we're going to get close to doing that. We did have a, then we did have a meeting of the Minnesota members of the Diversion Authority that same day, and part of that was discussing the obligations that we have through the original joint powers about working with the state legislature on future funding for the Minnesota share, so we, we talked about, about that process moving forward. As I've reported to this board before, we're also looking at a, a joint powers, forming a joint powers entity between Clay County and the city of Moorhead for handling, which has been requested by the Diversion Authority, to have a sounding board on the Minnesota side for concerns of landowners when it comes to valuations on property that we may have to acquire, you know, and that type of thing. So it gives them a group from Minnesota to come to, to talk about that. Right now, I think in the North Dakota side, they go to the Cass County Joint Water Resource District is where the landowners, their goal for if they don't agree with appraisals and that type of thing. So, so that's the, the intent of this group isn't to do any, any types of eminent domain or anything. It's more of a group formed to work with the landowners if they have, if they don't feel they've been treated fairly in the process. Along with that, the group did, the group did give me the, the, they suggested that I, I present that to the watershed board, which I did do with an invitation to the watershed board to be a part of that joint powers. And so I, you know, we have offered one, possibly up to two members of the watershed to also serve on that group. And again, it's the capacity, or what the job to do is just to work with the landowners if they feel they've been being treated unfairly in the process. So I, I think yet today, we're trying to formalize a letter on behalf of our Minnesota members on the DA that we're gonna send the official request to the watershed board to ask them to participate in that, because we are in the process of drafting the, this joint powers group, and if they want to be included, we want that to be included in, in the draft that we do, so we don't have to redo that down the road. So, so that's something that's developing this week, and I believe we intend, intend to send that so they have it on their agenda to act on it. I think their next meeting is the 28th, if I'm not mistaken, so. So that's, that's that. Then on Friday, we had our Juvenile Center and the jail construction meeting is on the 18th, and we had a, and we had another executive meeting in the morning. So I, I was only able to get to the jail construction meeting. I didn't make the juvenile construction meeting on that Friday morning. But on the jail construction meeting, all was going well, and I asked if there was anything that would need to be reported on, and maybe, well, Steve wasn't there either at the juvenile one. But everything seemed to be going well. The project, you know, we talked more about the paving projects that are still gonna need to be done, and so we directed construction engineers to work with our engineers to keep, to have our engineers do as much as possible in that, in that process to help keep those costs down for the remaining work that needs to be done on overlays or what have you. I reported last time there was some serious concerns regarding hot water issues at, at the correctional facility, and as of the last meeting, they said most of those, they're getting, they're resolving them, they've been improved greatly. They still have some concerns about faulty equipment installed which would come under warranty that they're working at doing, and it has to do with, there's actually some valves or something that have shown corrosion, and they certainly shouldn't be corroding in less than a year, so. So that part is being worked on. Let's see, I think, Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Goh.
Yeah, last Wednesday, went to the Eggs and Issues meeting at the Marriott where they talked about the diversion. That was a very informative session, and they really gave a lot of good information there, I thought, and I appreciate it. One point of interest that I thought there was, you know, every day we, when I look at the delays that could be coming up, you know, they were talking about what it costs us daily for delay, $140,000.
$128,000 a day.
A day, for every day we delay that construction, and it just shows the urgency that we need to move ahead with that. Wednesday also the Historical Society, and there we're looking at, not till 2021, but Clay County's gonna have the 150th anniversary, so. And I just wonder where, I don't know, do we have some historian here, or should we get involved in that as far as in and of the planning? I don't know if we have someone here that's very knowledgeable of Clay County history. I mean, they've got Mark Peel on the board there, and he's, I mean, he's excellent, so. But I didn't know whether, how we want to get involved as Clay County. I mean, it is our anniversary, you know, and it's just, so, 150th, so. They're looking at putting a science museum somewhere, I mean, I don't know, Historical Society, yes, but Moorhead or Clay County's looking at a science museum in Clay somewhere in Moor, hopefully in Moorhead. A lot of stuff going over, Monday nights in the Chuck Yard, like February 4th, there's gonna be a Wild West gunfight put on there, you know, so it's a lot of good stuff going on over in the Chuck Yard. I mean, that's presented by the Historical Society. I mean, a lot of times you look at the Historical Society, well, that's where you go look at the ship, you know, but there's so much other things going on at Historical Society that I think Clay County has to be aware of, you know, it's, it's a lot of things, different things going on. January 25th to 7:30 in Prairie Public TV, there's the Beyond Bollywood, there's something about the Indian experience, you know, and it's just a lot of good things coming up there, and it's just for people to stay informed, I don't know if you get on their website or whatever, or become a member, you know, it's just a lot of good things. I mean, it's Clay County history, we're talking about them. Those are the ones I.
Thank you. Commissioner Haney?
Thank you. On Tuesday, I attended the Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Committee for Clay County, and Pat Boyer from Clay County is retiring, and she was given a certificate of appreciation prior to her retirement at the end of January. A Place for Hope fundraiser is this Saturday, January, or was this past Saturday, I guess, at the Dewar Community Center, and then a Day on the Hill for Adult Mental Health is being scheduled for Thursday, March 14th. They're trying to put together a bus to be lined up to bring the consumers down there and the people that are going to be involved in that. Moorhead PD Captain Derek Swenson is passing the torch on the committee to Sergeant Joel Vaxton, who will be replacing him. Captain Swenson's gonna have his hands full with his new position and everything. Suicides and disgraced walls unfortunately were up in 2018, and we also approved the 2019 Adult Mental Health Calendar. Then on Wednesday, I attended the Eggs and Issues along with Commissioner Gross, and I think, who else was there? Were you there, Jane? No? Grant was there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. And that, a tremendous amount of, per day it costs, it was the figure that stuck out there as well. On Thursday, I attended the Lake Agassiz Regional Library Board of Trustees meeting, and we welcomed a new Clearwater County Commissioner, Mark Titura, a farmer from Bagley, to the board. He took the oath of office, the LARL budget ended 2018 with a $25,000 balance which carries over to 2019. We adopted the 2019 final budget. The Director Liz Lynch's report. Gretchen Guck is the new Director of the Detroit Lakes Public Library, replacing Mary Haney, who retired after 18 years. Looked back upon 2018, Lake Agassiz Regional Library had a great year, among the highlights of which were the renovation of the Crichton Library. Will be launching a new giving campaign. Downloads of eBooks are up 17% overall in the system, so that means that a lot of people are taking advantage of that. eBooks are very much in demand. And they had a discussion of the 2019 legislative strategy. They approved the 2019 meeting schedule and committee assignments. And then on Friday, it was the Clay County Early Childhood Initiative met and they celebrated and thanked Linda Anvik, the public health nurse, for her years of service, and we had a report from the Healthy Family America. Their caseloads are at 100%, and we also heard from the Nurse Family Partnership, their report, their caseloads are at 95%, so both of those entities are doing a good job. And then we also had a wonderful success story about a teenage mother who, with support from her parents and the Healthy Family Association, has turned her life around and is now pursuing a nursing degree, and everything's going well in her life. So it was nice to have a success story to relate here, so. Thanks to everybody on that Clay County Early Childhood Initiative, too. Thank you. And that's my reports.
Okay, and then I had the Chamber of Event for meeting on the diversion. That, that was excellent, I agree, Frank, they did a good job. The Cass County engineer did a good job of going over the entire project and where it's at, and then the mayors from Moorhead and Fargo and West Fargo all gave excellent presentations, and I think everybody that was there learned something about what's going on, so. That was good. I had the detention advisory meeting that Kevin reported on, and I think everything is going well. I think our partners were impressed with, after the tour of the new, or the remodeled center and where it's at, so that's looking good. I had the meeting with Kirk, Kevin mentioned also about tipping and service fees, which we'll have more information for the board on that sometime in the near future, and I had, I don't know, I had a number of diversion meetings last week. I think I lost count after so many, so that was it for me. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Tuesday, I participated in the Board of Adjustments and also attended the Planning Commission meeting that Commissioner Mojo has spoken on. We, on Wednesday morning, I, I attended the Eggs and Issues, the diversion related. Also that, later that morning, we had Central Mid Meeting. Again, we focused on some of the issues, custodial, custodial issues for Georgia is a pretty large concern, and I think we'll be discussing that later in PIC. That afternoon, we had a conversation with the planning and zoning on the different issues that are happening in their department. On Thursday, I met with, Darren and I met with Tim Beaton, Executive Director from the Fargo-Moorhead Foundation. We focused some of the discussion on the study that they, they were part of back in 2015 with the Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Company of the Chamber, United Way of Cass-Clay, and the FM Convention Visitors Bureau, and really focused on, at the time, there were 67 job openings in the Fargo-Moorhead area, about half of those jobs were, would be considered a lower income in the $13 range. And some of the challenges that they're, we're finding in filling those positions deal with childcare, transportation, and housing. And Mr. Beaton's portion of the study dealt on the housing, and looking at, kind of trying to find that area, that niche between, it's not low income, and, but they're also not able to, in many cases, go to a Realtor and provide housing for themselves. And so, working together and looking at those opportunities. Mr. Beaton had shared some of the initial ideas, I think right now they're more in the, in the planning piece, and as that comes, comes to full fruition, they may ask to kind of share with you guys some of their visions for that. On Thursday, I also was able to participate in the tour at the Juvenile Center. It's amazing to see what the building was to what it, what it is now. That afternoon, we met with Dave Overbow, Kim Carpenter, Eric and Hallie in relation to the Bison Meadows subdivisions, and they'll have some recommendations on becoming to Highway. Participated in the MCIT 2019 Property and Liability webinar, and some of the upcoming changes for 2019. Commissioner Whelan mentioned we had a variety of different, different diversion meetings this, this past week that I participated in. We attended the jail, LEC meeting, owners meeting, it was covered by Commissioner Campbell. A lot of things that, in relation to the juvenile facility, I did ask that construction engineers come forward here in a couple of weeks just to give this board a full update to kind of where we're at, and so it's been a number of months since we've done that. That afternoon, I also met with Darren and Pam, just to kind of update where we are in the Attorney's Office as far as staffing plans. And I believe that we've made, we've made three offers to, that have been accepted, that will be starting over the next month, and they're in the process now of interviewing for, for the civil, lead civil, and civil opening. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Anything else? Oh, I, let's see, we, just a reminder that we've got the intergovernmental retreat on Friday, it starts at 8:30 in the morning, and it's at the new Law Enforcement Center. Hearing nothing, over here.